...
Very good English man.
Uh, no, that's why I didn't write it. I think I'm done with it. Oh yeah, this is this. That is what I was talking about.
Mm.
Really?
Yeah, I'm gonna show them back up to the top.
Hi everyone, we're gonna give it a couple minutes. We're gonna give it a couple minutes just because I'm still meeting people into the meeting before we start. It's six o'clock right now, so if you just could hear with us for a couple seconds.
Are you able to see if a lot of people are on there or you can't see?
You can.
In addition to these people, but you can't see who they are, right? So it's like you wanted to watch anonymous, but now let us know that you're watching.
Okay, you should probably start. I'm gonna pull this down to my mouth. Okay, good evening everyone, I'm gonna begin this meeting. With the streaming, I can take my mask off for a second so that people can actually see my mouth as I'm talking, I will put it right back on when I'm done. So Tuesday night, first of all, I'd like to apologize to everyone, but the problem hasn't been remedied as there's currently 143 people in this meeting, and there's an additional group of people streaming online. So I do apologize for the technical difficulty, but we would not want to hold a meeting with importance such as this topic without having the ability to discuss it in public and/or people to offer public comment and insight into the situation. So to give you a little bit of background, last Friday, I had issued a press release. Friday, we had not gotten the official word yet, but we had heard information at that time that Lackawanna County was going to move into what they call a substantial category. So you have low, moderate, and substantial. The Department of Education has put together guidelines, and during low, you can be a full return, and they don't recommend full virtual. In a moderate, you should not be in a full return, but they recommend a high or a virtual. And in a substantial, they recommend a virtual platform for learning. So there was a lot of questions going on, but at that point, I was using a website to track specific data to our area. And on Friday the 16th, according to that data, there was two cases in Old Forge, and we had a positivity rate of 3.17. Which is why I put that press release out saying, "We're looking at the local that let that out." We understand that Lackawanna County may be going substantial, but here's where we are. Sunday afternoon, I was sitting in my kitchen, and I received an email from Cherry Smith at the Department of Education. And that email was offering an invitation to a superintendent's meeting to take place on Monday morning, and it was all the superintendents of Lackawanna and Bradford County. And specifically, it was on the designation of moving to substantial. So there were representatives, local representatives for the Pennsylvania Department of Health, and there were state representatives for the Pennsylvania Department of Education. Bradford County was in its second league of substantial, we had just moved into substantial. On that phone call, Matt Stem, who is the Assistant Director or Assistant at the Pennsylvania Department of Education, was flat out asked, "What is the recommendation of the Department of Education?" And he said, "Once a school district is in its second league of substantial, the recommendation of the Department of Education is to move to full remote learning, and to remain in full remote learning until the county moves to at least a moderate level of transmission of the virus for two consecutive weeks." The one that information was given to us, he was very, very... But to say though, it is still what they call an LEA, a Local Education Decision, whether we should or should not follow that recommendation. The board was contacted, and the meeting for Tuesday was scheduled, because we understand that this decision has implications on a multitude of things and on people's lives, and we wanted to make sure it was a public meeting so that people could participate. So I will tell you as a superintendent and the administrative team that we had recommended and are recommending to the board that we are going to follow, we would follow the Department of Health's recommendation and move to full remote learning. I understand the implications of that educationally is not what a lot of people want to hear. However, as I said in the press message, the press release I put out Friday, and I'll always say, the health, safety, and welfare of the students and the staff is where our concern is. But because this is an LEA decision, I've gathered a lot of information, because I'm sure you as representatives, you as people in the community and the members of the board have a multitude of questions of what this impact could be, or is it the right decision to make at this time? As of today, I just want to share some statistics with you. So as of today, using the same website that I've used for local data, there are eight cases in Old Forge, and that has risen the positivity rate to 12.31. So there are an increase in cases. In addition to that, I did this afternoon seek some survey data from our teachers, and for the board to have this information in making an open decision. Of the 89 people who responded, there were 55 that believed that we should transition to full remote learning, which is 61.8%, and there were 34, 38.2% who believed that we should remain hybrid. In asking them the question of if we did stay hybrid, what impact would it have on substitute teaching rates, would people be using sick time or sabbatical leave? There are five people who would definitely be using sick time or sabbatical leave, and Mr. Goddard can give you some statistics on where we are right now with that sub shortage, and that's not an Old Forge issue, that is an issue all schools are facing during the pandemic. And there's 32 people who would consider the use of sick time or medical leave. If we did move to a full remote learning platform, 44 of our teachers would prefer to work in a home environment during a substantial transition, while 42% or 42 teachers would like to work from their classrooms where their materials and resources are. And I have some information on connectivity as well, if there's questions on that. I know that there's board members who have curricular questions that need to be addressed. But at this point, what I'm gonna do is we're gonna open this up to public comment. Here's the order in which public comment will take place. So there's 161 people in the Google Meet right now. The first opportunity for public comment will be for anyone who would like to speak. Now, you can unmute yourself at the bottom of your screen, there's a little white bar that will pop up, if you click on that red microphone there, it will allow you to speak. So for anyone who'd like to speak, you may do so. For phone calls, you have to punch a code in, and that code will allow you to go ahead and to speak. There is a chat feature inside the Google Meet that people may utilize, and I will begin to monitor. If anyone would like to post, comment, or question in the chat feature, then you may do so, and we'll go through all of those. For those of you who are streaming on YouTube, there is a chat feature there as well. You may type your comments in that chat feature, and what we will do is then we'll go through all of the comments and concerns in that chat feature, and we'll come back around if necessary. I need to stress to everyone at this time, right now, we are simply looking at hearing concerns and opinions and voices about either remaining hybrid while in a substantial transmission, or going to full remote learning. If the board elects to remain hybrid, sports are not an issue at that point. So if you're concerned of sports, I would ask that you hold right now until that initial poll is taken. So we're gonna do an informal poll tonight. Formal resolution on this issue will take place at the board meeting on Wednesday, October 28th. The recommendation of myself and the administrative team is, even if we remain in a substantial transmission, the Department of Ed and Department of Health said that there will be another superintendent's meeting on Monday, where we will get further information at that time. And if the choice was to move to full remote learning, we need people to have time to get childcare and other arrangements in place. So we would not be making the recommendation of the earliest move to full remote learning until the 28th. That's when we would say, you know, so I could get everything out there beforehand. So this initial conversation is on your thoughts and opinions on either the full remote learning or the hybrid learning, remaining in the hybrid learning. So at this time, I'm gonna open it up to public comment, the chat feature is available. In addition to the chat feature, you may also speak. Once we go through all the Google comment, then we will move to the YouTube comment. Mr. Goddard was monitoring that at present. So to the folks that are out there, the floor is yours.
My question, go ahead.
Folks, at this point, if you're gonna speak, if you just state your name and your residence, just so we have that in. There's a comment that the wall was involved in. Okay, so inside that, we're the question, Aaron, you have a part to do up for the board, and we know it is ending of the fourth quarter. And if you vote for all the recommendations of the Department of Health and the Department of Education, what they said was, if the choices remove to for full virtual, their recommendation would you remain in full remote virtual learning until Lackawanna County maintains two consecutive weeks of moderate or low transmission? So I can't give you an ending, because at that point, simply, we don't know when that would be. There's a "I vote for hybrid learning" to the board. A question, if you vote for virtual, do you know how long it will be for virtual? I did answer that. Okay. Another comment, "I hope when the school board makes the decision, they take into consideration the seriousness of this virus and how it is hurting people." Our family has lost a few members due to this virus. There's more comment there, "I vote for hybrid learning, not necessary..." Not necessary to go to full remote. "I vote to stay hybrid." "I vote for hybrid learning also." Question, comment, "My son usually goes to school once a day to meet with his learning support teacher for extra help that he doesn't understand with the virtual material. What kind of help can we expect if this is 100% virtual?" This is Hopkins, would you like to take that question from a learning support standpoint?
Absolutely.
You're gonna have to yell.
If we do go virtual, then the learning support, they're what it's doing virtually, and that could be in a private group meet with that student, or it could be in a group setting under or, but the learning support teachers will assist virtually with the students.
There is a comment, "I vote for full virtual until the substantial declaration is gone. We have to consider the teachers, staff, and students, as well as the increased potential to spread the virus through the community. Full virtual learning, in my opinion, is too difficult for the students and the parents. These kids are not getting the education they deserve." People should be able to, I think.
I think there are a little few people that were trying to say something in the beginning.
Yeah, if anybody would like to speak, please unmute yourself, I'm just reading comments at this time, just tell me to stop talking. Wait, it won't start October 28th, don't you think that's going to be a little too late? As I explained, there is a superintendent's meeting on Monday. Based upon the numbers, we should have a rough idea on Friday of where we are. However, official word does not really yet declare, the numbers are posted to the Department of Health website on Friday, and the Department of Education has told us that we will meet as a superintendent's group on Monday. And again, there has to be consideration, if the board elects to move that way, for people to make arrangements for childcare and then for other things, because this will be a switch from where they currently are. One's a lead, thanks Michelle. "I vote to at least stay hybrid, because it's been a fact that an elementary school age child cannot get sick from this virus more than they can give it to an adult." "I vote for remaining hybrid learning." "I vote to continue hybrid." "Keep going hybrid." "Our daughter is in kindergarten, and I believe the half-day and extra precautions are working well right now." "Keep things the way they are, and in house, we're ready to move to a parent, if they want children, at home, then let them do it." "I vote for being hybrid." "Stay hybrid." "Are there any needs in the school now?" "We have not had a current school in this school. We have had, have had, staff, and have been on a different team, or whole student bridge, but we have not had a new student yet." "I vote for whatever leaders and teachers say. Virtual learning is a risk to the student, not to the person." That is the end of the comment, and currently, in the staff room, your group vote.
Dr. Keating, I have a question?
Yes.
My question is, my son is currently in special ed and he's going five days a week. And he's really doing well and he really struggles with virtual. So is there going to be any sort of option at all if we go full virtual for any of the special ed kids to continue to attend?
Again, this is how I would speak for you, but right now because it's a substantial transmission, if we move to full virtual, we're going full virtual in an effort to curb the spread of virus. So we would have cameras going on for virtual at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if you want to make sure that you're muted, that should stop some of this. Children are trying to learn virtually with at least the two days a week. They can get some one-on-one in-person learning that makes a big difference. So please try to stay hybrid at the very least. If other people are not on mute, you are breaking up and echoing. I agree we should stay hybrid. These children will have no immune system and be dying from the common cold. You already have a system set up for those who choose to stay virtual. I think this is probably an excellent thought if we are kids safe, we really should stay hybrid.
Dr. Keating, it's Megan McCabe. While I totally validate everything that everyone has said about staying hybrid, I just want to speak from experience level in a school that has had an impact and has had to put a ton of students into quarantine and staff into quarantine. It spirals very quickly. And I just think that everyone really needs to understand that while in-person education is so important, that it really does get out of hand very quickly. Once you get one case, it's a domino effect. And that is going to be even harder to deal with than if you are proactive and go all virtual right from the start. That's just my opinion.
Megan.
Mrs. Keating, who will make the decision if the teachers are teaching from home or in the district itself?
I couldn't hear your question, you repeat that?
I'm wondering who will make the decision on when the teachers, if we do go full virtual, will the teachers be teaching from home or will they be teaching from the school district?
If it's elected to go full virtual, that will be a decision that will have to be made. Right now, the way that I had written it to the board, you know, this is just my opinion, it was that it would be a choice and that people with medical issues, childcare issues, or extenuating circumstances would all be given priority. I do need to.
Teachers have children who are learning virtual too. They have to give their teachers to our kids too. I just don't understand how that would work.
Well, if we move to full virtual, and the teachers are very well aware of this, we would move to full live streaming. There would be no free recorded lessons anymore. We would follow a full live streaming lesson. The schedule would be there, everyone would be live. Because we need to engage children if we're going to be in a full virtual environment. So I have been very consistent with teachers in letting them know that that is the expectation.
Dr. Keating, Rob Murnau, may I speak?
Sure.
Dr. Keating, I'm under the presumption that if there was something that a child or a student or a staff member had Corona, that we're set up, that the children are protected, are they not? By the way, you have it set up for the school year?
Our health and safety plan right now, we are fully following the guidelines that were given to schools, that people are masked, that people are keeping six-foot social distancing to the greatest extent possible. We removed furniture from the building. We had ventilation systems over all. So we took, what I can tell you is every necessary precaution that was given in guidance to reopen schools over the course of the summer in our approved health and safety plan, which is available online for anyone to review.
So at what point, if we stay virtual, at what point two, three students contract COVID, maybe a teacher? When are you going to be into that point where you say no more virtual, part-time? Like the way we have it set up now?
Well, right now, it's not because of the school-based issue. Right now, the recommendation from the Department of Education is based on a county-wide transmission level, not a school-based issue. So that is where the, right now, the recommendation is stemming from. Within the school, there is guidance to if you receive so many cases within one designated building, that you need to close and sanitize as many local schools have done. At present, the Old Ford School District has not had a case within the confines of this building. Again, we've had people who had to quarantine. We've had people who've had to be tested. We have not had a positive result. So this move to virtual is because of a county-level transmission, not because of an Old Ford issue.
Okay, so we're safe as far as hybrid right now until you deem otherwise? Or if you listen to what the county is trying to tell you?
Well, and that's what I wanted to say when I put the press release out on Friday is that I will continue to monitor local spread. So again, we had on Friday the 16th, there were two cases in Old Ford's via the website that I use and 3.17% positivity. As of today, the 22nd, there were eight cases in Old Ford's and a 12.31% positivity rate. So I do need to be, in what I said to you last Friday, again, it has not impacted the building directly. You are 100% correct. We are maintaining all aspects of the health and safety plan within the confines of the building. This information came from the Department of Education on Monday at a superintendent's meeting where it was said, if your county remains in substantial for two consecutive weeks, the Department of Education is recommending that we move to full remote learning until your county goes to at least a moderate designation for two consecutive weeks. That is why this board meeting was called.
All right, thank you, Dr. Keating.
There's a question about furloughs and layoffs. And at this point, I would prefer for us to go through the hybrid and the virtual positives and negatives and then get into detail if a full virtual model was elected. How many cases have the Old Ford School had between elementary and high school? Again, we've had zero cases within the building. We have had people quarantined due to close contact. We have had people be tested, but as of right now, we have had no cases within our building. So if the school has more than five positive cases.
Five positive.
Correct. For a solid two weeks, no notification, no heads up of childcare, so why are you giving away? Yes, if there were five positive cases, we would shut down immediately because the virus would be in the building and there would be imminent threat to other people because of five positive cases. The lag right here would be because we are following state and county level numbers and we would be giving people that time because again, we have not had a direct case here in the building. There's another comment, well said Megan, also data shows elementary-age children can and have gotten the virus and even though they do not have symptoms, therefore not knowing they are carrying the virus, they can still spread. Live stream is still not the same, kids need to be there. Would sports be canceled if we go fully online? Again, we're going to hold sports comments till a decision is made whether we're hybrid or whether we're fully online. And then we're going to let people offer their insight into sports. Just a message to the board, this decision will impact learning for years to come. This decision should not be taken lightly, knowing that in-class learning is fundamental and how will the students with IEDs be impacted. A case in Old Ford out of a community of 9,000 to up to 10,000 doesn't warrant closing the school. I would love for us to stay hybrid or even fully in-person, but it does not make sense for our district to put anyone at risk at a time when cases are rising to the point that the Department of Health and the Department of Education recommend us going fully virtual. If the healthcare professionals, educational leaders, as well as the administration recommends full virtual, then I believe it is necessary to take these recommendations seriously. To do anything contrary is irresponsible, in my opinion. The teachers are doing an amazing job with virtual learning. They teach and administer assignments and assessments the same as if the child were in class and answered questions if the child were in class. And we keep our children and teaching staff in a safe, protective manner. The school is doing great so far with no cases, why would we do this to kids? Eight cases in Old Ford out of 1,000 residents. If virtual, I'm sorry, I moved really quick. If virtual is decided, although it may not be ideal, I am so impressed and confident with the decision of the teachers. They have set an excellent precedent for students to adapt to. Virtual learning will never be the same as in-person learning. I feel the teachers have been doing a wonderful job learning how to present and teach online. They are working hard to improve their understanding of how to succeed due to the teacher. If virtual is decided, is there equipment available for kids that are in school now? I have a child in kindergarten. Yes, there are computers available. If you have not received one and you need any kind of technology, please call the main office of your building tomorrow and give them your name so that we can address that concern. If we go full virtual, will all the Google Meet lessons be recorded for students who cannot log on during the day because parents work? We will work with teachers to accommodate people in those situations. I think virtual learning would work if teachers were a little more attentive and dedicated to their online class. And from what I've seen so far, they're not. This is not, this has to be thought through a little more before a decision is made. What if the county stays in substantial category but Old Ford's percentage drops? Again, the recommendation from the Department of Education is that the county must go to moderate at minimum for two consecutive weeks. Continue since online learning has been and continues to improve. I feel our focus should be on the increased cases in the county. All virtual will allow us to be proactive until the numbers are more controlled. Please answer my question above, would sports be canceled if we go fully online? It would have made sense to continue sports if they can't have any in-person classes. So that would be part of a decision if full virtual were enacted. So, and I apologize if you were not at the top of the meeting. What I said to everyone was, we are going to go through the information and offer people input into whether hybrid or virtual is the more ideal setting for us at this time. The board will then make an informal vote as to whether, an informal choice, they're going to stay hybrid or move to full virtual. Once that decision is made, if we remain hybrid, sports is on as it is right now under the current athletic plan. If we move to full virtual, that would be a second decision that the board would need to make. So I can't, I'm not being rude, I cannot answer that question at this time. I lost my place, so I apologize. I am completely in favor of the full virtual plan, safety has to come first. Good teachers, which are district staff, will be able to teach these kids effectively. Both parents in our household work during the day, so my son doesn't get to participate in live stream on his virtual days and it only completes his work in the evening and misses out on live instruction with his teacher. He gets frustrated and struggles with virtual days, especially when it drags later into the evening and disrupts his sleep schedule. He also receives services during his hybrid days and will not benefit well if that goes virtual. People need to understand keeping the school open teaches the children how to navigate and live in a world with COVID. Otherwise, children are clearly not grasping this in-school classroom teachers, the children how to maintain some level of new normal. If we were to go virtual, there shouldn't be any sports. My kindergarten first and second grader really need to be in school. Last week, we were trying to appease teachers by discussing kids moving classes. This week, all we want is to close, what has changed? What will the board vote on this, the 28th? Again, there will be an informal decision made tonight. An informal resolution will take place on the 28th. As a student of this school being directly affected by this decision, specifically a senior who is trying to figure out how I'm going to extend my education to the real world, I would prefer to stay hybrid. Having only two days to be face-to-face is extremely difficult and stressful. My future is going to be greatly affected by the pace of this unknown year and it is scary. On the other hand, this is a global fatal pandemic. If we must close, then we must close. From a teacher's perspective, virtual-only class is a fantastic learning opportunity. If the goal is to get students college-ready, this is a fantastic opportunity to teach them the technology that will help them become college-ready. I also believe that virtual helps get internet into homes that may not have it before. As far as advancing technology in education and leveling the playing field with the poor families as well as well-off families, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Is there anyone, is there any other comments on Google? I'm going to transition over to Mr. Gatto, who has the comments from the YouTube channel to share with the board.
Thank you. You feel that full remote learning is the best option at this time? The safety of the students and their families is and should be the number one priority. Have there been any cases in the school up to this point? That question's been answered. Stay hybrid, hybrid. I would like to stay hybrid learning as well. My daughter has an IED. What about single parents who have to work and don't have childcare? If we go full remote. My daughter's special needs sadly, virtual learning is not a option for us. Excellent, stay hybrid, my son is in high school. Stay hybrid. I think the guidelines are in place and working great, I prefer a hybrid format. Why are we still having contact sports if this is so serious? Virtually actually is proven to give students the help they need. Hybrid for five days, please do not push the kids back and forth to virtual and hybrid. These numbers will continue to change. I'm just wondering when all the kids remain homebound and not go outside. Some children with educational need that are in school five days will be having difficulty learning over computer and will not benefit from virtual learning causing too easily fall behind. Also, children young as kindergarten needs to be in school since this is the age that they develop and build skills that will be ready for future education needs. Wanting to have them places where. Virtual learning is not acceptable. Disability comes with boundaries. She relates with the school building itself. For a child like her, full virtual would be a compromise to her quality of life in a way no one could possibly understand. I have a question. I'm wondering who would have the idea to allow this thing to be open to people that have nothing to do with the school district here? Stop putting families at risk and go virtual is the old. People are just afraid to implement the teaching. I support full virtual, however, I do feel that there needs to be more flexibility such as allowing children to complete their work, including working.
There's two additional comments in the chat room. Hybrid at minimum and stay hybrid. If there's any other comments? Or any more questions? Although I am for the hybrid, I will say I am very impressed how well our school and teachers are doing compared to other parents in other schools I talk to. Keep up the great work. Honestly, if my children could go five days a week, they would. If the precautions are in place and it's safe to be out and about going wherever you please, then they should be able to stay in school. And there's another comment, stay hybrid. I'm sorry, it might have been answered already. I apologize. But when will we get an exact date for the decision? Tonight, you will have a game plan leaving here tonight. Again, if we remain hybrid, we are staying as we are. If we move to full virtual, then we will give you that date for transition. What happens to special education classes whenever we go completely virtual? Life skills, is there something being put in place for them as well? Because he's doing great in school. Again, this move is not a district-elected decision because we're changing our educational health and safety plan here. This would be a move because of substantial transmission in Llackawanna County. The reason we'd be taking people out of the building and putting them in their homes for virtual learning is because we don't want to be part of that spread that is taking place. Sean, I don't know if you want to add anything there? Okay, at this point, I will open it up to board decisions, board questions. Mr. Gatto will continue to monitor YouTube. I will continue to monitor Peter.
How many students come five days a week? Percent-wise, 15%?
It's 75%, he said, correct?
54 in the elementary.
25 in the high school?
23. 23. Less than 10%. Everybody else is virtual at some point during the week.
Correct.
If we're wrong by going virtual, your kids will miss approximately three days of school. It's Wednesday if we choose to go virtual following Tuesday, Thursday, Monday, Wednesday. The numbers go down. We're back to hybrid in two weeks. Kids are missing three days of school. And I think for safety sake, now again, if the numbers keep rising, which they may or may not, we've made the safe decision now. Instead of taking the chance of having people get infected in the school and then those people be mad that why didn't we do this when we knew the state goal was to do it? About an easy decision for anybody. A couple of 400ers heard my email this morning by email. I think it was very serious. Three months ago, we had the ability to be all virtual. I would have signaled all virtual. I didn't think we could at that time. The order lasted six weeks. School has done a great job. Teachers are doing a great job. Administration is doing great jobs. And I believe at least for the next two weeks, we can suffer educationally, if that's the proper term, for the safety of what possibly could be. If we're wrong, we're wrong. Give them another double day of school.
I'm sorry, but it's very hard to hear whoever is speaking.
I apologize. I guess it was just for myself speaking, although I'm trying to convince myself what to do.
There are additional comments here. I feel we should go virtual before COVID comes into the school. Other school districts have gone into the home one-to-one learning. Teachers who special needs children have old board arranged that. And I have to say, right now, this would be a reaction to the current substantial transmission. If this turned into, if we went virtual and it's turned into something, I believe you all know, Mrs. Hopkins, at that point, we'll move heaven and earth for your kids. And we will do what we need to do to make sure that we're addressing your child's individual exceptionality. I can't guarantee in-home instruction because, again, what I need to stress here is, we're not making this decision like it was August of what's the best way to learn. This meeting is occurring because the Department of Health and the Department of Education put me on a phone call Monday, and it was said to us, we're recommending that you do this. So that is why this is happening because, and folks, if you go onto the spread times, if you go onto any of the local news stations, you're seeing today's article that today is the largest single spread day since April. So this is where the meeting came from, and I attended on Monday, and this is where the information is coming from. You are all amazing for putting this meeting in a public forum and accepting questions. Very hard to hear the others. Folks, this map is a gift. I'm going to translate for anyone. I will himself. My family has called it a gift for a very long time. Teachers should be commended for their hard work, selfless dedication, and unwavering commitment to their students and this profession. I have every confidence in their ability to educate our students regardless if hybrid or virtual. I think it would be a wise decision to try virtual the two weeks or whatever it takes. If nothing happens, great. If something happens, we are already home and prepared.
Erin?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, it's Vanessa. I was hoping to kind of speak if I didn't interrupt anyone. Okay, could you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I was able to hear what Dr. Rob Notary was saying. And for those of you that couldn't, basically, I'm going to surmise it in my words that when this pandemic started back in March, March 13th, to be exact, unfortunately, the school community, everybody, has been faced with just not knowing what to do and how to move forward. I think across the state and beyond, everyone has done a fantastic job with trying to figure out how to provide adequate programming to students in ways that we never imagined. I am a mom, I am an administrator in a school, and I am a board member. These decisions I'm faced with daily, and I don't take lightly. I see teachers working endless hours, day in, day out, having breakdowns, knowing that they can't meet their kids, trying to meet their needs, doing everything they possibly can to try to reach each and everyone's learning styles. We want an early on direction from the state and the Department of Health. Just give us some direction, and after all this time, we finally have it. We have been given a recommendation that all schools in the county who have a substantial designation, which is red, for two consecutive weeks to move to full remote learning. There is no doubt in my mind and heart that the best educational platform for students is in a school building, brick and mortar school, with a live-breathing human being delivering instruction, showing that empathy, showing that caring, being firm when they need to be, and providing that extended help. Unfortunately, that big word pandemic has halted and has made us try to figure out ways to provide programming to our kids. And I feel strongly that since this direction, I'm sorry, this recommendation has been provided and guided and given to us, we need to really seriously consider that and really follow it. Dr. Rob mentioned, you know, we have the population of our students that are virtual and the percentages. I am positive, and I would be, you know, very, I will work hard as a board member here to say, we need to come up with plans in the future to try to help bridge those gaps for our kids, whether it's tutoring or anything else, because we've done a great job with thinking out of the box in order to provide ways to help our students. So right now, pandemic's happening, cases are climbing. Thank God it didn't crush our school like it has crushed other schools. But right now, we're seeing that increase. And I don't, I can't see why we want to just throw things up in the air and say, eh, let's see, maybe it's not going to hit us, maybe it is. Let's err on the side of caution. Let's keep our kids safe. Let's keep our staff safe. Let's keep our community at bay here. And then let's reassess in two weeks and talk about how we could bring students back in after that two-week, you know, I'm sorry, that two-week stand of being, you know, out of the red or the substantial. I just feel that we need to really look at that. We've been wanting some guidance, and we finally have it. And thank you. My dog is going nuts right now.
There are additional comments. Sorry, Gatto.
One was a question, do the children now need to have cameras and microphones? I can speak from the high school. We started distributing Chromebooks that came in two weeks ago last week. We've given out over 400 computers as of this afternoon. So we're down to, I think it's roughly 46 or 45 students in the high school that have to pick up a device, and then we would be fully virtual in the high school. So those Chromebooks are equipped with cameras and microphones.
From an elementary standpoint, anyone who was on the list who was only given one device or a tablet at the beginning of the school year due to us not having our computers in, you haven't contacted by Mrs. Shabo to get your device. And as I said before, if there's anybody who needs a device or is having issues with connectivity, we ask that you call your building's office. And if you can do so tomorrow, that would be greatly appreciated, so we can assist you. To Mr. Rinaldi, who was relentless with our computer people, we'd like to thank him for the 500 Chromebooks that arrived. And when the other 300 come along, we'll have a magic party, but it's going to be for...
Hello, you can't do that.
Huh?
Well, when you can't do that.
Yeah, so.
I still have a question.
Okay.
Stay hybrid. Most cases are clustered around colleges and nursing homes. Want to mention what was said, did they read the Department of Health on that one?
What one?
About colleges and nursing homes.
So within the information that we were presented on Monday, give me one second, folks. Got a couple of things here to shuffle through. In Llackawanna County, 40% of people who contacted have a known exposure. There are 60% of the people who contacted who do not know where or how they received COVID-19. When it comes to the community spread, 23% were from specific areas like the ones you're speaking of, colleges and nursing homes. The other ones were not directly linked to those at this time.
Right next, the school's doing an amazing job keeping our kids safe, but honestly, COVID spreads fast. Wherever the kids can't get it, that's the line. If there is an optional for all of those who now want to go virtual to use that, they bring the numbers down with the hybrid students and less than possible exposure. We all agree that kids need to be in school, but health and safety is what matters. My child might not have been at all virtual past my vote, but it seems like we never had to say anything. School has been safe this entire time if you are concerned and don't select your child. TDS website states they have not isolated the virus, therefore they cannot actually test the virus. Definitely not already created vaccine report. And that is a lot of conspiracy. Let the parents make a decision they see good for their own children, not everyone else. The law is the law. Children with IEDs are entitled to certain rights. If someone can show, and where, and order pass superseding this, pretty shall we? Does this listener in this meeting answer these questions?
We would not be at all denying anyone educational rights. We would be moving and looking at how to meet the goals of the IEP in a virtual environment. And as we did in the spring, anybody who is missing services would be offered compensatory education services. We will not in any way violate IDEA or the rights of an exceptional child. I have additional comments here. Well said, Mrs. Nee. Well said, Mrs. Nee. Very well said, Vanessa. Virtual for two weeks. I agree 100% with what Mrs. Nee said. Thank you. Well said, Vanessa and Dr. Natori. I think that we use facts to make an educated decision, not unstable heartfelt emotions. Everyone wants what's best for children, teachers, and the community. You should consider the decision to stay online for the end of the semester. The lag in testing results and reporting will put you very close to the end of the semester anyway. Transitioning back and forth between hybrid and virtual could be very confusing. My kids have been full virtual since the beginning of the school year. Can I keep them virtual until five days school is back? Yes, the virtual, if we remain hybrid, the virtual option is not going away. The virtual option will remain if we remain hybrid under the current health and safety plan that was adopted back in August. I personally would rather have them safe and keep them virtual. Can we get a vote from all parents, guardians, and teacher staff before the next meeting? Again, if you missed the beginning of the meeting, I apologize. I did put a survey out to the teachers today. The teachers did say that under substantial transmission, there were 60, I think I got it. There were 61.8% or 55 people who said move to remote learning. There were 38.2% or 34 people, staffs, faculty, and staff, who said to remain hybrid. And that's, we are trying to give all parents and residents of the community an opportunity to speak this evening and to comment that is why we're doing this meeting in public. So these deliberations have public participation and are as transparent as I can publicly make them.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, Rob, you said something about, for something for two weeks. And I think another comment said something, Robert said two weeks. I don't understand what that means.
We'll go back to moderate. Yeah, be moderate for two weeks. So right now, we don't know. This will be the second week of substantial, which we won't get the numbers until Friday slash Monday. This might be all moved if we stay moderate. If we're substantial, then you're supposed to take it in the next two weeks. But you're supposed to, you have to be moderate then for two weeks.
I understand about two weeks, this period, that means remain unchanged.
Right.
But I, I feel like maybe somebody got the wrong impression. Probably wouldn't be right for two weeks.
No, no.
That's not a given.
No, no. Well, the belief is that the numbers are not legitimate or any old force or whatever. If that's the truth, if that's right, if the numbers aren't just a cluster at this point and wherever people think they are, then those numbers will bear out for the next two weeks.
Sorry, it's Megan McCabe again. I, I just wanted to piggyback off of what Mr. Stewart had said about the lag in test results. Not only is there a lag in the person getting their test results, but after they get their results, there's sometimes like a four day lag before the results are reported to the Department of Health. And then the Department of Health is in, is starting their contact investigation. So sometimes we have people that are infectious out there unknowingly walking around and exposing people because the results not only are taking extra long to receive, but they're also taking extra long to get processed by the Department of Health. So I think our numbers are not exactly a true picture of what's going on right now either.
I have some more comments. The board, you all did an amazing job. When does this start?
Well, again, there's no definitive start date. Again, I will attend another super attendance meeting on Monday to let the board know if there's any additional guidance. At this point, we're trying to give people time for childcare arrangements and so forth. So what we had said was initially the meeting was gonna be Tuesday, and we had set a start date of Monday. Now what we're saying is, since the meeting is Thursday, do a start date of Wednesday, if that is the recommended path.
I would like to thank all the teachers and administration for the amazing job they've been doing. We are grateful for your hard work and hard work. My child did not learn and did not keep up with virtual learning. He's a child that needs face-to-face learning. If I altered the IED to have in-person learning, what would happen then?
Well, we, we would have to, this topic, it would be an IED team meeting. New norms would be issued to children. I don't know if you wanna take that?
If a, if a student is having difficulty and their father is behind and whatnot, and the parent is requesting testing, it means a couple of different things. If you can't request the testing, then we would issue permission to evaluate and see where the deficits are. If this is a change in placement, then a norm would be issued from hybrid to virtual. So there's two different, two different ways to look at that. Not so sure with the parent about which to follow.
Erin?
Yeah.
I did have a question. I, uh, through the feeds that you were reading, you and Mr. Gatto, the question came up regarding if we move to all virtual. Obviously, there are parents that, um, you know, need to work and childcare is an issue, and they may be staying with a grandma or grandpa or someone else, perhaps daycare. And they're not able to be unsynchronously, which is live when the stu, when the teachers are streaming their feed. Is the asynchronous option available so that families know that that is an option? Or just a little more information with that as well?
And that's, I would, I would work with the teachers. Right now, I told the teachers everyone has a livestream. So what I would need to do is then further that statement saying, at least for the evening, the lesson needs to be recorded and posted for that student to watch. But that is inherently, again, that would be a change in what I initially told the teachers. I'm not saying it's not something that cannot be accomplished.
Okay. Again, that's just to ask, get to my question.
Well, record the livestream and post it for those kids. There's additional comments in the chat. Transitioning back and forth between hybrid and virtual is less confusing than explaining death and illness to a child. My children truly prefer hybrid, but I would have to say, with the increasing number of cases, Mrs. Nie makes a valid point. Yes, that was my point. Well said. Thinking the numbers are false, having incredible source such as the CDC saying the results are wrong is opinion versus facts. Let's keep the facts, not opinions. I am actually in daily contact. I'm actually in daily contact with the Department of Health, so the information about the lag in reporting is 100% factual. Let the parents decide what is best for their kids. I am truly afraid for my junior, who will be heading to college soon, totally unprepared. I hope this decision is well thought out and not letting emotions take over. My daughter has an IED, so hybrid works for me because I'm a single parent who works and does not have childcare. As a parent, my heart breaks for the students. A lot of them are struggling. As an educator, it is equally heartbreaking. Everyone wants what is best for the community, kids, staff. I think erring on the side of caution and going virtual is the way to go. It protects everyone. Struggling with virtual is better than struggling with sick families. It is hard on working families in the long run. We need to protect each other.
Any other questions from the board?
I would, I would like to just say that I really appreciate everybody's feedback. And I think, not to speak for everyone, we, everyone here and online board members are taking this super seriously. And it's not an easy decision to make. And we appreciate all the feedback and the input and the questions from everyone. And I'm glad to see so many people that care about this issue.
Right now, a comment. My children are struggling as well during hybrid, but it is what it is. The health and safety, everyone knows first.
Are there any other questions that I, I can answer to the best of my ability? Are there any other concerns? Will there be parent surveys available regarding these concerns? I can easily solicit a different, I can solicit additional information from parent surveys. At this point, I think we need to suck it up as parents and do what's right. Not hybrid is working for my family, and I don't have childcare because when your family becomes sick, you're going to have no choice but to stay home. Two weeks to curb this again is nothing. We have already been through months of this. It is what it is. Does the school test the teachers for COVID? We are not testing teachers. Everyone coming into the building has a temperature scan in the morning. As part of our health and safety plan, all faculty and staff and administration is to monitor for the CDC guideline symptoms of COVID. If anyone has any of those symptoms, and that would be student or staff member, we are asking as part of our health and safety plan that people remain home and are medically cleared to return to the school. And that was something from back in office. While I completely understand the worries of high school juniors and seniors, most colleges and universities are now completely online. The skills students will learn from virtual learning will prepare them for this new education age. Agreed. That taught me to breathe. I'm reading agreed. Just in case you thought I was throwing some stuff out there now. Instead, someone said agreed. And then they said, ha! Not true. I work for a university. That is opinion.
I have one. We need to put this in the administration hands. They have been doing right for our children from the beginning. And I wish people would stop putting them down.
Yeah, I guess I'll give my two cents on it, and then we can tell for a vote if everybody else. I just feel that, I mean, everyone, everybody that spoke and had a comment is 100% correct. There's no good thing to do, in my opinion. It's just crazy. But, um, I feel that if we're worried about the virtual, we're not taking the, if we're gonna remain hybrid, we're not taking the virtual option away from anyone. So families, again, it's sick, you can take your kids and they can be fully virtual. That's not an option that's going away. I also feel like this recommendation, which is what it is at this point, which likely by Monday can change, it could be a mandate from the government that we need to shut down to be fully virtual. But at this point, the recommendation, and there's been other recommendations that we didn't follow along with and made our own decisions on. And without the rest of the community being shut down, maybe closing the school, we still have other places in the community that are open and that people are congregating, students will be congregating at home. So as far as the community spread, I, I just, I don't know. I, I just, as an educator, I know the best place for these kids is in front of us. We've been so fortunate to not have any cases so far. It just seems like something that we can keep a close eye on, in my opinion. Going to, we can see where we're at. If we can get these kids a few more weeks in person with our teachers, that could, that would be great. And that's, that's how I feel about that. I don't know. Does anybody have anything else they wanna say? Or do we wanna call the straw poll or our poll and see where we're at?
There's additional comments.
Yeah, and I have a question too, please. Do you wanna read the comments first?
There's two additional ones. The first one is, make the decision that is right for your kids. The second one is, I agree that parents have the opportunity to choose to go virtual, no matter what, but what about the staff? They don't have the same choice. Their lives and health matter too.
I have one. If school goes completely virtual, what will happen to sports activities? As you said before, that's something else to discuss after this conference.
Um, Alicia had mentioned, um, you know, parents do have the option, if we remain hybrid, to, um, hold their child and opt for virtual. How does that impact, um, the programming inside with teaching, aides, paras, the whole gamut? Does that impact, what should we be looking at if, or say, many parents choose to go virtual and we have more kids virtual than we do hybrid? Any changes? Looking, trying to look at the big picture here.
Uh, the system that was set up for us, and I would ask Mrs. Nie and Mr. Gatto to jump in here, was a seamless system. So the kids in class are participating with the kids online. There are some teachers that are currently reporting and upvoting. But we were trying to keep it seamless because when we were preparing for this, not only were we preparing for situations like this, but we have had a multitude of people who have had to quarantine. And, and they're transitioning in and out of the building on a regular basis. So we tried to create a system that was seamless. So when you flip into virtual or you come back to hybrid, it's not impacting your working because the teacher, God bless them, is, is handling all that at one time in every classroom.
I couldn't find mute. I'm sorry. So Erin, I think I'm looking at in terms of like staffing. Would that impact the staffing too? I mean, you mentioned quarantine. Would, would we be looking at anything else? I'm just trying to think everything here.
From a staffing perspective, the largest concern that we have right now is there is a regional sub shortage. We do not have substitute teachers. Mr. Gatto, am I correct to say we have two consistent and one and a half that are?
Yeah, I would say that's, that's accurate. And then we have, uh, we have two more that are interested. I know that you're looking into services, um, starting around the first. But, you know, everything we've heard is they're having trouble filling some of these issues as well.
So the biggest concern would be, and when I shared the statistics at the beginning of the meeting, due to personal health reasons, there are five staff members who are saying now that if we remain hybrid, they may need to seek a medical leave because of the substantial transition in their own health issues. Finding substitute teachers for those positions would be an issue. One of the things that we're most worried about, and we've had some high call-off days because it's not consistent every day, is we can't staff right now substitutes and maintain social distancing at the same time. Before COVID, if we didn't have enough kids, we could put kids in the cafeteria, in the auditorium. We could split classes. There was a lot of stuff we could do. But now you can only put so many people in a room to maintain the six-foot social distancing. So we don't have enough subs at present to cover that. In addition to that, and I, I, I will go back and give you the specific number, there's upwards of 15 to 20 people that said they would consider that a legal leave if a substantial transition continues. That staffing would dramatically affect us as a district.
But am I correct by saying, right now, if a teacher is not in for that day, there is no livestream?
Some teachers, because of the reason they've been out, have been able to livestream. But if, if we remain hybrid and, and a teacher is, is not there and they still have children in that room, I need a certificated individual overseeing those children.
Correct, but the kids at home don't have any livestream.
Correct.
They give emails in the morning. It says, no and so, no, no livestream today.
Because I don't have a teacher in that day. Correct.
So if we're looking at the numbers increasing as they have, which has brought us to this meeting this evening, you know, we used to have those red, yellow, green phases. Now we're in low, moderate, and sub substantial. We're in the red right now, substantial category. Numbers increased consistently two weeks. We have to make a decision. And, uh, you know, it's, it's a tough one. It's not something that I take lightly. You know, I said it earlier, um, looking at it from the lens of a mom, a board member, an administrator. I have two kids in college. I have a daughter at the high school. Trying to make the best decision. I don't wanna play it around with a pandemic. I don't know what it's, what turn it's gonna take. And personally, I have personal friends that have been impacted by it more recently as up to yesterday. It's some scary stuff that they're telling me. So, you know, I think that in knowing that we're going to lose some staff and not being able to obviously perform the way we, you know, had hoped. And I just wanna keep our students and our faculty, everybody safe. You know, I think we need to consider the virtual option for that two weeks during the substantial time, as they recommend it.
There's a number of additional comments. Will the substitute, so if this happens, well, I would have to find a certificated sub in that area. So I, I would have to, I would have to find a sub. I will tell you that finding subs this year is not easy. Finding replacement teachers is not easy. In fact, the librarian STEM teacher that we hired still has not been released from their, their other position because that district can't find someone to fill that position. So there, there's, it's not normal here where this is an easy thing to do. Uh, comments, schools need to set an example and take guidelines seriously. It can't be a gut feeling that makes us take a chance because we like the situation to be different than it is. We cancel, ooh, I lost it. I apologize. Somebody else commented, I lost it. We cancel school for weather and anytime we perceive danger because we put the safety of our kids and staff over anything else. This is a potentially lethal health issue. The district should follow the advice that puts safety first. Thank God teachers have those options to take medical leave and extended sick time. As of now, there are some teachers who do not turn their cameras on for Google meet streams. They should all have to. If school goes virtual, would they be required to turn them on? It's hard. It's hard enough for kids to learn from live stream, but when they can't even see their teachers, it feels less like classroom. And again, the expectation is changing if the board elects to go to full virtual. So yes, there will be, there will be a difference in how things are live streamed. Like you all have the joy of seeing my face right now. We will, we will make changes because of the virtual environment change.
Dr. Keating?
Yes?
It's Roseanne, I would like to make a comment.
Sure.
Okay. First of all, I would like to thank our administration and our staff for all the hard work that they have put into keeping our students and our faculty and the staff of the district safe during this difficult time. I feel that as a board, we have followed the recommendations of the Department of Health as well as the Department of Education throughout this whole time. I think this is a crucial time in terms of the pandemic in our area, since not only is the county at a substantial level, but also, oh, four just now identified as being substantial. I do think that we need to, and as a former educator, as well as a grandparent of two children in the school, I value education, but I at this time feel that we need to take the health and safety of our staff, of our students, of our community, because the virus can be brought into the school, but it can also be brought out of the school into the community. So I do agree with what Dr. Notary and Vanessa have already stated, that I think at this time, I feel that we need to take the recommendation of our administration. We need to take the recommendation of our staff. We need to take the recommendation of the Department of Health as well as PDE and move to virtual learning during this time and continue to monitor the situation and move back to hybrid when it is deemed safe. And I would like to also thank the parents for their participation this evening. I think we've had a lot of good discussion and a lot of comments. It's obvious that not everybody agrees, but I do think that it was a very valid discussion and a very respectful one. Thank you.
Okay, should we call for a vote? I'm sorry, call it down.
There's another question about sports. Once again, we will come back to that if necessary. I agree to go two weeks, as Mrs. Egan said. Don't forget to applaud the maintenance workers for their hard work and their long hours, and also having to disinfect the entire school to make sure everything's clean for the students and teachers. Thank you to maintenance crew, day and night, for keeping the building clean and sanitized. And the last one, well said, Mrs. Egan.
I have one more I agree with, Mrs. Drado. I was going to say, I want to add one. First of all, I want to thank administration for all of our work that you guys have pursued. I want to thank the teachers. I appreciate the parents' feedback, you know, for bringing this group, this great model state, just to hear the pulse of the community. And we're in a really difficult situation in a global climate now. And we haven't got a lot of recommendations from, we haven't got a lot of recommendations from PDE. And we've been kind of swimming through this, you know, school by school. And when PDE finally gives our recommendations and the health department, these are people, especially in the health department, have knowledge of infectious diseases. I don't have knowledge of infectious diseases. I know as a parent, I know as an educator, I know kids learn best when they're with their teachers. However, with that being said, we have to follow the experts. We have to follow the data, we have to follow the scientists. Like Dr. Keating said, the two cases are 3.7%, now we have a case of 1.3%. We need to get ahead of this. And by going virtual now, we can get ahead of it. Because I know a lot of people at town are saying, "Well, we don't have the cases, we don't have the cases." We can't touch that face of the paper. We do have the cases. The cases are very large on the town. And we have to take the substantial designation that scientists and data experts have given us, because we're in this situation, and safety comes first. And like I said, I'm a teacher. My wife is a teacher. My brother's an educator. And I have two kids in elementary school. I've been working virtually since August. I know how hard it is for parents. I know how hard it is for teachers and administrators. And I want to add one too, I appreciate the maintenance and all of our work they do. This is a very difficult situation. We have to come together as a community and understand that people matter. Everyone's lives matter. If one case, if one child in this district, one parent or one staff member got sick or for worse, I'm not willing to take that risk. We need to follow the data and follow the scientists and go virtual and just see how the data comes in the next couple weeks. Thank you, I appreciate your input.
There's some more comments. I'm sorry, I tried to break down my laptop. I agree with Mrs. Brumenco. The stability of this meeting is just stunning. Awesome people looking out for the best interest of our kids. A truly fantastic discussion, the worst of times. Dr. Keating just made a decision, this is dragging on regardless of choice. People are not willing to be happy. But this battle for the opinion is in helping to matter, and I think good luck. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Brumenco, I agree with everything he said. I think it's a worthy cause, I need to make sure all state owners are heard. I thank the board and administration for taking the time to do this task. Your time is appreciated.
I have one more. This is nothing to play with the numbers, they're going up daily, and expect it to get worse. This is not a cold we're talking about, this is a pandemic.
Let's put it off, I'll show it over to you.
Okay, let's take Dave Coleman. Pass, so we're either virtual or hybrid. That was an order, go in here.
Virtual, top to bottom. Top to bottom.
On top of LGI and then above.
Virtual.
Virtual for Rob. Ryan.
Virtual.
Virtual, Marie. Virtual, Pat.
Virtual.
I'm a hybrid. John?
I'm a hybrid.
Vanessa?
Virtual.
Mrs. Brumenco.
Virtual.
Mr. Townes is up there somewhere.
Oh, this is 7:30, he said he'd be with us in four minutes. He was a hybrid, I can't speak for him, though he's not here to say that much. He should be joining us shortly.
Alicia, it's Vanessa. I couldn't hear everybody, could you kind of yell out what everyone said?
Tom and I said hybrid, everyone else said virtual.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So right now, it is 6:00 to move to the full virtual learning platform. So the next thing would be, if you can, would you accept the date of Wednesday, the 28th? Or would you rather the board meeting take place informally, do the resolution, and move after the board meeting?
So you're asking if you would like this to start on Wednesday or Thursday?
On the paper I gave you, it says Wednesday, the 28th.
Does it matter to you, or?
No, we have to try that, we're just trying to give people time in their lives to get this straightened out.
Okay, let's go from top to bottom, Rob, Wednesday, Thursday.
It's with the caveat that we're saying.
It's with the caveat that's one thing, but I participate in the meeting. I'm going to put a public statement out that we are still substantial, and we will be moving to virtual learning on, like.
You're going with Wednesday? Friday, I mean, it's Ryan. Marie. Wednesday, Pat, Wednesday, John.
Wednesday.
I'm a Wednesday, Marie. I'm sorry, William.
Wednesday.
Vanessa?
Wednesday as well.
Okay.
Okay, so that would be, any do at this point. So to the public right now, this meet, the district, I will participate on Monday. I'm sorry, I turned my camera off for a second. I will participate Monday in a superintendence meeting. I will probably receive the invitation over the weekend. And I will find out from the Department of Health and PDE if this is still the substantial designation and the recommendation. At that point, I will contact the board to let them know the information. And if the school remains, if the county remains in substantial, the district will transition to full virtual learning on Wednesday, the 28th of October. I will put all of this information in a press release that will go out tomorrow morning, that will be available on both Facebook and the district webpage. I will ask Mrs. Egan to post it to Dojo, and I will ask Mr. Drado to send it out by email. So that information will also go out in written form. So you have documentation of what I said right now. There's a question, will the 28th meeting be going on Google? Yes, I will post this Friday the agenda for the board meeting. In addition, I will post the link. And because of the interest in the meeting, we will also post the live stream link as well. So how it works at a board meeting is you will first be able to comment publicly on agenda items that are on the agenda. And then in the end, the board will open it up to public comment for agenda items, for items that are not on the agenda. And that agenda will be posted by this Friday through the district webpage at OFSD.cc. I am going to ask the board, can we have a two-second recess before we move into the next phase, which would be to look at delineation of how the virtual platform will work? So it is 7:30. We will call back at 7:35. The mic is live in the room, but it lets people do a quick stretch and use our facilities if necessary. So we will return at 7:35, just give us a few seconds. Okay, thank you everyone for allowing us to have a very short little recess there. I'm going to go through right now the tentative outline of what was put in place when we were looking at initially sketching this out or planning this. So right now, what we have for our students is that all students will transition to full remote learning on Wednesday, October 28th. I will participate in the Department of Health and Department of Education meeting on Monday, and I will inform the board that things have remained the same or that we need to make the transition based off of where the county lands at that time. Students will follow their established daily learning schedule online. Students are expected to report to all classes at their designated start time and remain in class until dismissed by the facilitating teacher. Now I understand that this evening, there were questions asked about those parents who aren't able to work with their child during the day, or the children can't work during the day. We will put something together for Wednesday night to address how we will handle those issues. In full remote learning, all students, computer cameras, and this is more of a secondary issue. In full remote learning, all students' computer cameras, and this is more of a secondary issue, will be turned on live during lessons. Students may order the background during these live sessions. So we're expecting, persons just like you can see me right now, we're expecting interaction such as this, how you saw Mrs. Need tonight when she spoke. Any student who needs computer technology should contact your building's office as soon as possible. We will make Chromebooks available for people. If a student is having connectivity issues, internet or Wi-Fi issues, also please contact your building's office so we can gather that information. For our special education students who are in out-of-district placements, we will follow the programming schedule of the intending district. So if you are in an out-of-district placement, if that district is still open, we will be providing transportation for you to go to your out-of-district placement. The Wolfspire CTC, who has received word today, they are remaining fully virtual through November 9th. So they are remaining fully virtual through November 9th. Upon their return, we will make sure all information is supplied to Wolfspire CTC students so that they understand what they need to do. For our dual enrollment students, they will continue their programming at their college or university as they had. If there's any of our exceptional children involved in that, who will obviously continue with transportation. From a teacher perspective, teachers could report to the building. However, reasonable accommodations will be made for individuals with childcare, medical issues, or other extenuating circumstances. For our teachers, they will be expected to work their regularly scheduled day. There will be a sign-in and sign-out sheet. Teachers will not leave the educational environment, just like they would here, without permission of administration. All teachers will conduct live synchronous lessons daily. If working from home, teachers must be able to assure that they have a quiet, dedicated environment for streaming lessons. Teachers working from home must have sufficient Wi-Fi and computer technology, and then all professional duties and responsibilities remain intact while not in school environment. Does anyone have any questions on students or teachers?
I do, Erin. I'm sorry, it's Vanessa. You had mentioned synchronous lessons, and I know that there are numerous parents asking in some of the chats about like being asynchronous and things like that. I just totally lost my train of thought. I'm sorry, let me rethink here. I got it now.
Because of the amount of questions that arose in the chat this evening, we will go back to the administration and the teachers. In a Wednesday evening at the board meeting, I will present how that is going to work for those folks at that time.
Right, and I don't want to harp on asynchronous. I do remember my thought. I think when it comes to noting that there is a subs-s shortage, and in the case when a teacher may not be able to be available or "out" quote-unquote sick, you know, I think... I'm sure you'll come up with a plan with your administration and teachers, but there may probably be a time where lessons need to be posted, and there would not be a live instructor, and I was just wondering if that's going to be considered too?
Yes. Any other questions on teachers or students? Our parent educators and our personal care assistants will assist the classroom teachers or parent educators with daily live synchronous instruction. Our case managers will be assigning students to each parent so they know with whom to make contact or assistance. Parent educators will be conducting check-ins with learning support students to make sure that our learning support students are on track and getting what they need. They'll assist students with the virtual and the Google Classroom. They'll support enrichment activities for a rich and talented youth, and they'll assist students with review work for mastery. They'll also assist with their progress monitoring. For our personal care assistants, they will provide help to their designated student virtually, and that's with all aspects of learning assessments assigned through the virtual platform, enrichments, and abuse, and they will be online during the day with their students to help support them. Questions on that? We'll work with Mr. Detowski on arranging the maintenance staff and the scheduling that would be needed based off all the educational planning that is put in place. I'll have an update for that on Wednesday. So for food service, a combination of lunch and breakfast will be available for pickup on Monday and Wednesday of each week. Mondays pickup will provide breakfast and lunch for Monday and Tuesday. Wednesdays pickup will provide breakfast and lunch for Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. We will continue in the Children's Food Pantry through CEO Weinberg every other Friday. Mr. Rinaldi, I don't know if you'd like to make a comment as to moving to the new platform?
On November 3rd, we plan to take advantage of the seamless summer option being offered by the USDA. We'll be providing free meals for all and any student, or anyone that needs it from the school. So that's really going to help us out because we haven't had a good September in food service because of the number of kids that aren't here. But we'll be able to give free lunches and breakfast to any school-aged student the borough won't order anywhere else, beginning November 3rd. So really good move for us, and it's really going to help out some of these kids that need to get these meals when they're not in school.
That's wonderful, thank you.
From a transportation perspective, transportation will be provided to any student whose academic placement is still in session, someone who has transportation at present. For the board, and again, for work with Solicitor Katz, the transportation provider is concerned about the district honoring payments for the contract. So we will need to have a discussion on where we are going with that because we will not be running, obviously, or ordering the requested schedule.
We'll remind the board that placements that open, students will be transported. If CTC reopens and parents decide to send their students, they will have transportation from the school even as normal for CTC runs. Also, in my mind, as I think through this, we will be providing 180 days of education. But there's no reason to think that any subsidy would be cut for the students who go toward school. So the issue for the transportation provider is if they can't keep their people employed. They're not going to have it. They're going to go out and get other jobs. Other school districts that have been closed haven't been paying the contract, and they've lost a lot of bus drivers. They're afraid they can't fill that contract should those districts open up. I don't want to find us in that position in two weeks. So I want to take this in chunks. First, you know, the first couple of weeks that we're doing this, we're all hoping that this is a very temporary thing. If it turns out to be long-term, then we have to get together, get in discuss this a little bit further. But right now, I don't want to hold back any payment from our transportation providers, but the idea that our subsidies will remain intact because we will be providing 180 days of education in this school. So we'll keep an eye on that, but we're going to go forward as agreed. Questions on that?
Thank you. Our clerical staff will report to work daily. Clerical employees requiring reasonable accommodations for childcare or medical reasons will be permitted to hold flexible schedule. Clerical employees using telework will be expected to meet all duties and responsibilities of their job function. And the same thing, administration will report to work daily. And if an administrator requires telework, again, they would need to meet all duties and responsibilities in their position. Any questions on any portions of what we started to outline? Okay, so we are going to move now to athletics.
There's a couple of questions in YouTube.
Okay.
Do students get speech? Will they still get their services being virtual?
Shall?
Yes, they will. When the pandemic happened, March 13th, one of the related services that we were still able to provide for our students was speech. Actually, our speech therapist did an incredible job with our students, and we will continue to do that in the virtual platform.
If kindergarten is now going full virtual, will more computers be available now? Yes, more computers will be available. So when will the parents know this is done? Monday after the superintendent's meeting?
Yes.
And then another question about computers available for kindergarten students, yes.
And most of the questions on the other chat are about when we would start. And again, that will while formally in writing after my superintendent's meeting on Monday, and that would be a Wednesday transition to full virtual. Somebody asked about the webcam rules. What I said is that since we're going to a live synchronous environment, the expectation will be that people are visible and participating in class by interwebcam with your teacher. Teachers are visible, and I would be to you right now. And that you can blur your background, and we will send out directions on how to do that so that nothing in the home or the environment would need to be seen. But we're going to have people interacting. We need to make education interactive and as authentic as possible under these current situations.
Another question, will kindergarten still be half-day is being full virtual?
Yes, they would need with their AM and their PM sessions. So at this point, as previously promised, we will open up comments, and we will open up questions on athletics before a decision is made to alter or hook in altering the current return-to-play plan that exists in the old Ford School District. So with the move to virtual instruction, if we remain in the substantial category, we will now open up to comment and question on athletics. Again, you may speak to the Google if you're in here, you may speak. I will monitor the Google chatroom as I did during the last discussion. Mr. Gatto will monitor the Duto chatroom.
I have some questions before anybody else comes in?
Sure.
I guess this was probably, should have been asked to Alcoa. The PVE Department of Health recommendation is to shut down the school district? Shut down the learning environment? I guess that was the only thing I heard.
One of the things that I can do on Monday is specifically ask for clarification on if they're saying athletics. When we were in there the last time, they did not touch athletics at all.
How they said was moved to a remote learning model, I believe was.
We'd better discuss this after the meeting on the bit.
Well, again, I wanted to try to be as transparent with the public as I possibly can. I don't want the public to think that we are delineating on something like this that has a direct impact on kids and not giving people opportunity to voice concerns or opinions as they did for the virtual environment. So that's why I'd like to open the floor up. I know there were comments before about athletics, and I don't want to think that I was lying to you. We are now at the point where there is a full conversation about athletics so the board can hear your insight into this. Now, to everyone...
I have a question.
Sure.
Okay, sorry. I have two boys in the high school. I have two boys that play sports. For as much as I truly want them to still stay in hybrid, and I would love for them to still play sports. But how could you... How could it be if a school setting is not safe when you're six feet apart or anything like that? How could it be safe to play a sport when you have contact with kids at all times?
That has been a million-dollar question for a very long time. And again, with everything that this is... Why it was so significant, the department made a recommendation this time is because all the department members said that's an LA decision, that's an LA decision. That's a local education decision. So when the return-to-play plans were formulated, it was a local education decision whether people should have sports or not. Locally, carbon nailed the not sanctions board, not sanctions, contact. However, some districts did move forward, such as us, with contact sports. So now, because we are moving to a remote learning environment, we have to make that decision as to whether we're going to shut everything down. And I believe, I'm quoting here, I believe it was Lakeland last night, who opted to move full virtual and close all sports. Some school districts only close certain sports. So there's a lot of moving parts to, you know, what we want to do with that discipline. And that's why we're opening it up in public comments. I hope that answers your question. Somebody had asked if it'd be virtual from the entire second quarter. Right now, if I want to speak to the board, if I'm wrong, we are only hoping it being virtual during the substantial designation. Once we receive two consecutive weeks of moderate or low transmission, or a combination of those two, we will transition back into the hybrid learning model. Okay, I'm not hearing anything in the chat, Mr. Gatto?
No.
Okay, so I open it up to the board. And we do have games scheduled for Monday and Tuesday while we're still hybrid, which we're going to keep in.
I'm a person of no idea what they... I don't want to say something else to these kids, but I... I don't know, we have to go educate them in the building, but they have contact sports, okay, I don't know. But we have no clarification from the state, is that correct? And what?
It's hard to hear, Erin.
They asked if there is a full clarification from the state? And that's what I said, oh, not a delineation for everything.
Roseanne?
Is this the same thing as when Governor Walz and Dr. Levine said that we should not have any sports until January, whatever? And we just regarded that one, and most people did. So not the representation of the problem. I don't know, I don't know if it's really whatever you guys think, I don't know.
I think this is one that we need to... If they're across after Monday. Like, absolutely, we do that.
Okay. There is a comment here, in-person schooling isn't safe, sports are not.
I have a comment as well, absolutely, no sports until every child with a disability is in school learning, followed by students back to in-person learning and sports.
Somebody attempted to respond and to the comment, I just read it, not true.
I would like to speak on sports if possible. My name is John Bartekowski.
Yes.
The reason I said not true on that is because we actually had a scare here and at our house. And sports, actually, my son was playing football at the time, and he was the only one safe out of the whole entire family. So there really is no rhyme or reason or link between sports or school, or, you know, the virus doesn't pick and choose who and or what it does. As far as sports go, we kind of signed our rights away, which, as far as sports goes, a long time ago, back at when, at the height of this. Also, when it goes to, when it comes to virtual, I believe there are children who are fully virtual who participate in sports. So, you know, if we go fully virtual, what is the difference between those kids that were already fully virtual? And... You understand what I'm saying, Erin?
I do. Yes, sir, sir, your comment is being documented.
Okay, that's all. I just want to...
Our virtual students have already been participating in sports, and now they can't. And there are other districts that have been virtual and have allowed sports from the get-go.
Yeah, I think my decision is, I'm sure Speaker Rinaldi is going to say the same thing. It's going to be direction from the state, from the state. It's gonna be directed from the state. The state's gonna say we don't think the health risks of these sports are that much more than the local decision compared to being in a school district, a building.
So we're going to listen to the state recommending that five students in a third grade classroom.
Yes.
Socially distant is not safe, but football contacts or could be played. We're gonna, we're gonna let, we're just gonna go with the state telling us.
I'm not saying I want to go with what the state says, but I just wanna, I wanna make my decision but also have that information as well.
I'm okay waiting until Wednesday night then to talk about that.
Yeah, I think that's, that should be scheduled for Wednesday.
Vanessa and Robyn, is that okay with you, waiting to discuss sports on Wednesday?
You're still pretty stressed.
I'm sorry, but I can't hear, I didn't hear what Rob said. I didn't hear what Alicia said.
We were asked, we were saying that we want to discuss sports further on Wednesday when we meet again since we will be, we're gonna be hybrid through Tuesday when we see what superintendent's meeting, the outcome on Monday morning is so that we can see if PD comes out with a recommendation for our sports like they did for remote learning.
So I will ask a very pointed question in that meeting. I will state that the Board of Directors of our district has elected to follow the recommendation. Are you or will you provide a recommendation on athletics while in remote learning? I will ask that question pointedly.
That'd be very apprehensive, I guess, I haven't said, because of sports. Oh, that, that was then fall back on our laps.
Correct, correct.
And I thought it was, I thought it was gonna happen.
I think, again, from my own brain, if the Department of Education and Department of Health didn't come in and say, hey, substantial numbers, go virtual, we would have never made that decision on our own, correct? I mean, we're not watching the numbers ourselves.
Correct.
The Department of Education made the recommendation. So if they're gonna come on Monday and say, we also recommend that because you're in a high substantially level area, you shut down as many large gatherings as you can. Anything that is involved with the school district should be shut down at all times. That makes our decision easier or at least more informed. If they come back and say, oh, we don't hear what you do outside the building, then we have to have another discussion about what we're doing with kids outside the building.
And quite honestly, there could be additional information or different information because the trajectory of the virus, and I'm surmising this, this is the opinion of Aaron Keating, so take that with a grain of salt, has risen so dramatically this week. I don't know if they will change anything that they've said to us from this previous Monday.
Under the original guidance that was put out by the Department of Health and PDE, when we were to move to virtual learning in the substantial area, when I looked back in the document, it indicated that sports would be suspended. So have they indicated that anything has changed in that area?
They didn't indicate that on the call on Monday. That's why, Mrs. Brutico, I will ask that question pointedly on Monday to get a clarified answer, and you will have that immediately in email once they answer that they are still following with that recommendation. There are a number of comments here. It says this virus does not discriminate. The virus is transmitted by a close contact, no in-person school, no in-person sports. Parents and students can choose if they continue to participate in sports. Teachers, staff cannot have an option to choose if they work virtually or not. Right now, the season where sports are outside, come January, sports are all inside, where numbers of participants are homework or indoor activities. There are virtual kids now participating in sports. Districts across country are currently on the 28th and the 31st. I don't know how kids won't be safe in school socially distant with masks, but contact sports such as football, where they're getting in each other's spaces isn't enough to risk or risk the stock. I don't understand if going full virtual, what about people who have learned and can't just give our jobs a heads up about the short notice? The virtual kids are participating now because school is still operating in a hybrid. The difference now is cases are increasing, but being virtual today was optional. Where is the liability of the school if school is on virtual learning but contains outside sports and the sports players contact COVID due to contact? And again, a parent had already said that there were waivers that had to be signed to participate in sports. Is the school held liable for costs associated with contracting in sports? And again, there's a sports waiver that is signed for students to participate. Goddard?
Absolutely no sports until every child with disabilities is in school learning. It's not safe for the kiddos to go to in-school instruction because of the spread of COVID. And it would not be safe for close contact sports. COVID doesn't discriminate between school and sports. Is the homecoming game still happening? As of right now, the homecoming game is scheduled for Halloween night. That would be determined based on what the board decides, if it decides night or Wednesday night. No school, no sports. We want to play our rest outdoors. I agree, coming from a senior, sports is one of the only things we have during this time that brings us a sense of homelessness.
So at this time, and again, I'm gonna speak to the board and they can correct me. They are going to direct me as the superintendent to, in the meeting on Monday, pointedly ask the question about the guidance Mrs. Brutico read to us saying that sports should also be suspended and that they are standing by that recommendation. Once that information is gained, I will share it with the board, and then we will make a decision at the board meeting on Wednesday, the 28th. The link for Wednesday's, for the Wednesday 28th meeting and the agenda for that meeting will be posted to Facebook and the district website, omsb dot C C by this Friday afternoon.
I'd like to just thank Dr. Keating for all of her hard work and the administrative team for putting this document together. I know that was a lot of transportation, all the other things that go into play when you move to virtual. So thank you guys very much for that.
Yes, thank you.
And thank you to the public for all of your input. They're not easy decisions to make like we decided, but we really appreciate all the input. So thank you. And shout out to the major department, JCP.
So at this point, we will adjourn this meeting. Again, on behalf of everyone, thank you for your participation throughout all of this. We will be convening for formal resolution and action upon what was discussed here tonight on Wednesday, the 28th, at the regularly scheduled board meeting of the Old Ford School District that is to take place at 7:00 PM. The link for that meeting will be available on Google Meet. Will be available on Facebook and on the district website, which is omsb dot C C. Thank you all very much.